So what is, what is, Patty, what does the third column mean that, because we didn't have a third column before?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you all for coming. Please make sure your cell phones are muted or turned off and please join me in pledge allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, I just.
It's fine. Okay, Patty, please take role.
Dan.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Wanda.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Sean.
Here. Any financial conflicts of any of the board members?
I do not.
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 Chair, make a motion to approve the agenda.
Got a motion by Dan, second by.
Second.
Wanda, to approve the agenda for today. Time for public comment. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any sub.
Let's vote and.
I'm sorry. All in favor of approving the agenda, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county staff, individuals or organizations. Chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of the remaining speaking time. Per county policy, the Yankton County Commissioners will not engage in personal conversation or make statements during public comment. Today's meeting is July 7th, starting at four o'clock today. Now is the time for public comment. Seeing nobody rushing up to the microphone, public comment is closed. Doing this now.
Take a motion.
I would, because we're not gonna, I'm sorry, we're not gonna save it till the end of the meeting because.
Okay.
Executive session, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Dan, second by Wanda, to move into executive session pursuant to SDCL one dash two five dash two one.
That's.
Uh, let's vote, Mr. Chair.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
So the weird thing here is that our total income is dependent on our expenditures. You know, or dependent on our budget set because so. But we do need to know what was our budget last year and what is the highest allowed budget that we can have this year without having that, you know? Because if we go beyond that, we can't collect those taxes. Beyond that, if we can cut the budget more, that's just going to reduce our taxes and reduce our revenue.
I'm making copies of this for you. It's, it's just a rough draft, but.
It's a little hard to like say this is the exact dollar amount of our revenue, but.
Yeah, it's.
Without grants.
We got a, we got a ballpark in.
That's what a budget is. Ballpark is.
Plan. Budget is the plan, yes.
Maybe I'm the only one. I've got duplicates of all of these. Am I supposed to have two?
No.
I don't have any.
Maybe that's why.
You do.
Just what's in my book.
I got duplicates here too.
Good, because it wasn't just me. Okay, treasure.
Okay, this is a sheet. Let me see if this.
It's attorney. This is a double.
Reason I question this is before we commit to expenses, we should have a fair idea we can make the repayment.
This is kind of a rough draft. This is what I will be sending to the state.
Okay, with the Director of Equalization, I have five.
He had a three and a four, and then this one I give you should be a three.
Well, but then I have five more that appear to be the same. And these are duplicates as well.
Well, that's, uh, done.
There you go. All right.
I got a bunch of extra on the equalization as well.
I don't know.
We keep that the same type stack here.
Never mind. Okay, thanks.
Now that I have took out the ones that.
Could I give you this? Oh, this is, this will be sent to the Department of Revenue. There's a total there of appropriations for the general fund. And that's the one we're really uh, care about is cash. That's the only.
This one?
Yeah, the only column that the, the county can spend is out of the general fund. There's revenues. And as you can see at the top, cash applied from, and that's what we use uh, from the general fund from the previous year for the balance of the general fund.
May I ask a question? I see that on the second to the right, there is a column that says historical preservation fund. So there's money there, so we don't have to worry about cutting them, or we do?
No, that's, there's taxes get for that.
Okay, so what we give is in addition to?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Uh, for, for the ones in the general fund, not anything that's not in the general fund.
Okay.
But because it's a tax levy, there's $144,000 that we have to write out a check to them and then give them a donation on top of that.
Well, as soon, yes, as soon as the taxes are paid, then they get their money.
Yes.
I think Wanda's comment was the 20,000 they're asking is in addition to that hundred and forty, so we're off.
Yeah, this is, I like, I don't know what they spend in the 144. The 20,000 is for the me building.
Okay.
And Kramer Canyon.
Well, I guess I'll say it, you know, if we've got 11 million dollars coming in and 15 and a half roughly going out.
So we got a problem.
Well.
That's, that's how it is all the ti.
Yeah.
You're never gonna have the same revenue for same expenditures. You're always gonna use money from the general fund.
But the general fund's been going down from 20 million dollars now.
But this is a lot better than it has been, and that's what.
It's almost better. It's, we want to, we want to know exactly, as close as we can project, what it's gonna be.
This, this number's revenue generated.
Our goal was, I think, was that it's not let the general fund.
In all actuality, cash available is this plus.
And, and it's.
Five million?
This is revenue that the highway department's gonna bring in through.
Yes.
Right, six million.
Yep, plus a transfer from the general fund of that.
But in all actuality, in all actuality, this is in the general fund, this cash right here, right?
Yes.
Plus this cash is available for the, to spend money on roads and bridges.
Yes, that's his budget, yep.
So in general, this does not come out of the general.
Down or are you?
You're saying this, what is this? Just, which column are you?
Highway.
The highway. Who's got that revenue sheet from last year with the 11 million on?
Um, we all have it.
I know, I, I wanna see what it looks like.
If I wasn't here somewhere.
Um, it is.
I have.
There was one more.
It was a step for a handout.
Yeah, she had it circled, and I, I guess, I wanna know what it looks like so I can find it in my book.
It is somewhere.
Seven million, seven thirty-eight, one twenty-seven, requested budget.
You.
She don't.
He's driving, huh? Yeah, I don't see.
As a general, a general comment, quite a few people have approached me in the, in the last couple of months, having read things in the paper and on the movies, and of course, listen.
Is your microphone on?
Yeah. Get closer, huh?
Yeah.
It's on. Uh.
Number of people have approached you in the last couple.
Yes, and, and all of them have been encouraging about cutting that, trimming the budget down to meet. cutting that, trimming the budget down to meet expectations and expenses and not to run any deficit of any kind. Nobody has come and said.
Spend more money than you have.
Yeah.
I echo those comments as well, and I think we, we can all realize that this year's budget's tough, but I look and I wonder what next year's budget and the year after that is gonna be. I, I don't see it getting, I don't see it getting better. Especially with the state, and the state is cutting all types of programs, thirty-five percent of salaries for emergency management. Uh, last year, VSO cuts barely, um, barely were sustained. I, I don't see that changing.
If they had made an announcement on the news today, uh, that, I think it was FEMA, uh, they're gonna depend upon the states.
Yeah.
Uh, raising the, the funds that
Yeah.
replace what the federal government is gonna reduce in FEMA. Well, that isn't gonna happen.
Can't happen. Well, in, in addition.
So, so one thing that I want to say here also is that I'm not advocating to go out and spend money or, or not cut back on the budget. But according to the meeting that we had prior to the last one, we've already cut two million dollars out of highway budget. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a pretty healthy cut.
John, you gotta understand that the two million dollars was carryover funds from the COVID. It wasn't earned funds by the county. It was a, it was a gift that was given to us.
I, I understand that, and that's why we cut that out of there.
I think people.
Just not fix roads and not fix bridges and things like that. Now, I, I'm appreciative of everyone who wants to cut spending down as much as possible, but I don't feel that other than that, other than that COVID money that we got prior to that, I don't think Yankton County was foolish with their money back then either.
I think that some of the people that want big budget cuts are under the delusion that if we cut back, then their property taxes will go down significantly, which I don't believe is the ratio.
Well, yeah. Property taxes.
Yeah, but not, not dollar for dollar.
Make a huge impact on the property taxes.
Let's, let's get.
Our, our cut of the property taxes is small.
Yeah, so, yeah, eighty percent of our budget is mandated by state law. If we can cut twenty percent of the twenty percent that remains, that's four percent. Do the math, Wanda. I don't think you believe me, do you? So I, why it might not be grand in the scheme of things, I think we gotta do everything we can. So I'm ready to get going and, uh, I'd start with line one and, and just go.
Line one of which.
Well, I'd say with the commissioner, one. And I mean, however the rest of the board wants to do it, I think it makes sense to open our book.
So why don't, so why don't we, why don't we then just cut, we're, 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 we're setting the budget for wages at three percent increase from last year?
Say again?
We're setting the wages budget at three percent over what, no steps, just three percent, okay? Then why don't we just take four percent off of every other line item and call it a day?
I don't think you can do that.
I don't think that's the wise way to do this.
What, what I, well, how I would like to do it, and maybe you guys want to do it differently. I think we go through this line item, for example, commissioners, we have thirty-five thousand at the Boys and Girls Club and the Yankton Transit under that one.
Well, why don't we start on page one, actually, page one, not page two?
Pages are not, don't go in order.
So.
Because the page one of mine shows four percent increase to commissioners. So we're assuming three percent.
There's, percentage is in the, in the right column.
So we just cross off them at that other column, correct? So we're all on the same page.
Well, I mean, if we're gonna be cutting and saying everyone's gonna be cut to three percent, no steps, and we're sitting here talking amongst ourselves about how much we need to cut the budget in every which way and all the fat. I'm fine with first thing proposing is we take no pay increase. We take a zero percent as commissioners. I don't think any one of us up here is really like.
I think we have.
Really needing that, and I think that's a lead by example type thing.
Because, uh, we will overspend our budget by twenty grand on operating expenses, the twenty-fourth. The commissioners.
I think that.
So we're not setting a great example.
I think that was primarily due to the study, like we did a library study we didn't budget for, and then we did a jail study. I agree, I agree with you, but, but that's being the reason and, well, and I think in, important too, that what's in here is, is uh, some of these other ones that we fund the transit and Boys and Girls Club for thirty-five thousand. Uh, you know, what, what's the consensus on that? I know the Boys and Girls Club, it used to be at five thousand, and then it went to ten, and then it went to thirty-five because they were doing diversion for us, and we had the grant, but we don't have that grant with them anymore from what I understand. So does it still make sense to be at thirty-five thousand without the grant that we got?
And in fairness, the state's attorney's office has taken over diversion, I think.
I did get a message today from some individuals by Gayville, and they, uh, asked that we would cut that because they said, well, they didn't feel it was fair that we're we're helping that, and, and they, if we do approve this, then they would like funding for the after-school program in Gayville and the Irene one as well. That was their comment, and we can decide if that's valid or not, but it does make sense if we're kind of supporting one program and not all programs. So I think the, the Boys and Girls Club is great. When we started funding them, they had just started out. I know my kids went there, um. They're, they're on pretty solid ground.
What do you, what do you propose to cut to?
I, I'd like to reduce it. I, I don't have a particular number, but I don't think it should be at thirty-five because it was that number when we got a grant. In years past, it was at five.
You've said that, pick a number.
We made a commitment a few years ago to pay so much, and we didn't pay it the second, second year. And my understanding was the Boys and Girls Club payment was based on like a three-year payoff of our original commitment.
Um, that might be a Patty question.
Patty, that, we went to thirty-five because they, because we got that diversion grant, correct? That's why we raised it, because.
I, I guess I, I don't think that's the reason why you raised it. I, I, I don't know. I know that that's when the state's attorney wasn't.
Yeah.
Was doing it.
Doing the diversion.
How, how I remember, and Tyler, if you remember, is we got, we got that grant because, Don, you and I went out to Rapid City for that JDI. Then we got the grant, and so we received the grant, and then we used it as like a pass through.
How about if we cut it to twenty-five thousand and call it a day?
Does this, does the school district throw any money at the Boys and Girls Club?
Who, who up here would know?
I don't know, I'm just asking. I thought maybe you would know. Oh, why is one?
For the twenty twenty-four budget here, I have the twenty twenty-four budget book that we did two years ago. And we had, it, that's when we jumped it from ten, it was written in from ten thousand to thirty-five thousand.
That, that's because of the grant we got, and so we, we actually didn't raise it that much. We received money and it passed through. So I would say five, ten, somewhere around there.
Then we should probably go back down to ten.
Yeah, or, or, or maybe five.
Maybe five.
I, I would propose.
No more than ten.
I would propose five. I think they do great work, not saying they don't, but we, we really gotta make cuts where we can. They're on a lot more stable ground here in those, in those ladies come in and speak. They, uh, attendance has gone up. They got plenty of kids there. They've raised fees, so.
It is nice that the annual membership fee went up from twenty-five dollars a year for all programming to ten, a hundred dollars.
Deb said the thirty-five thousand was to pay for the second half of the grant to finish out in twenty twenty-five. So we're down.
Exactly, yeah. That's how I remember it too, so.
But I don't think two thousand or five thousand, if you think that's gonna cut fifteen million and is even gonna make a dent in.
Well, we gotta, we gotta start somewhere.
So I'd propose five thousand. Somebody has a different number. Let me know, but.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say ten, just because of inflation from twenty-three to twenty-four.
I guess we gotta vote then, so. Uh, but, but the, the individual I got from Gayville, th- then they're gonna come in and ask us that we fund the Gayville uh, after-school program.
And how many people do they have?
And they're gonna have a problem with
Yeah.
not funding, uh, all the small towns around. They can use a facility if they want. They live in the small towns and, and their taxes are a little bit less than they are here. Uh. I live in the country and I need to favor roads.
I, I get it. It's a good, it's a good program. My kids went there. They, they liked it. But I guess we gotta, we gotta vote. Are we gonna be here till midnight?
Midnight.
Are you, make a motion?
I can't, John says ten.
Well, no, you don't have to make any motions, because you'll approve it on Tuesday.
Yeah.
All right.
It's just for discussion today.
Okay, well, then I agree with Dan. I, I say if Dan's good with five, I'll be good with five.
Wanda, Don?
I'm gonna stick at ten.
I would go with the ten.
Wanda, you're the decider.
Course I am. Um.
Come on.
Well, it kind of depends on what we do with some of this other stuff.
That's right.
We got it, we, guys, we're.
I know, it's, it's horrible.
Make a decision, move on.
Well, what?
Cut the difference, seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred, and then we leave the, the bus at seventy-five hundred, so buses the children around.
If we're a half a million dollars short, I can make some quick decisions. Know this, know that, know that, not five thousand dollars, drop, ten thousand dollars. It's yes or no.
Wanda, five or ten, and it's on you. Decide, and let's go to the.
Ten.
Okay. All right, ten.
Okay. Uh, Yankton Transit?
Zero.
I'm, I'm fine with that as well.
I think they drive some of these little children to school, so the state's attorney doesn't have to have a person do it and doesn't have to have a vehicle. So I think that it's a good idea to have them. I don't personally think that the southeast public transit that Yankton County is funding needs to drive to Vermillion. That's just me.
I'm, I'm fine with cutting that, uh, John, Ryan, decide, and let's
I mean.
Move on.
Twenty twenty-four, it was, it was twenty-five hundred, so.
Back it down to twenty-five hundred then.
Let's do twenty-five hundred.
Wanda, you okay with that? That's, would be three, twenty-five.
Not thrilled with it, but whatever.
We're going now, twenty, twenty-five hundreds.
Audits next in my book.
I mean, this is a pretty, pretty good budget to begin with. I, I really don't see
Okay, now.
Anything to, uh, well, she's right here.
I know she's right here.
No, re- really, I mean, it's, this is the statutory obligations that our auditor has to have with the amount of money she takes care of and, and elections. I just, I don't.
And next year is an election year.
Well, I, I really, I mean, I'm, I'm really looking, what, what, what are we gonna cut?
Okay, why did we run, uh, twenty grand more in operating expenses in twenty-four?
In twenty-four?
Where you at, Don?
I'm, I'm going back to the sheet that, uh.
I'm not seeing it.
That I provided to all of you, that Patty provided.
Oh.
The information to me.
Some of that, from what I recall, and you let me know Patty is, when we, when we did the insurance.
Don, is it this one?
Yes.
When, when we did the insurance change, I think that's where quite a bit of that came from, but.
Well, the, 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 those same changes would come to every department, but.
Didn't we see, Gary, didn't we see a bunch of changes throughout all the de- departments and? Yeah, yeah.
But, but that's under, uh, that, that was on that report, was moved under, uh, employment, uh, human resources.
Well, there's.
Talking about operating expenses. When I, what does it say under auditor for operating?
Twenty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars. Oh, on this one, my bad. Uh, twenty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-four in personnel.
Okay.
Operating expenses are minus six thousand, thirty-one dollars.
Okay.
You need a copy of this?
Oh, I got it here someplace.
I guess I don't know in this, I look at twenty-four's budget. It could have been.
Could have been a lot of things.
Okay, I'm looking at what we budgeted for twenty twenty-four and what we have.
Isn't that on here?
What?
It's in this column.
That's the current budget for this year.
Yes.
This is the actual twenty-five.
Yeah.
We don't have to be budgeted for twenty twenty-four.
Oh.
That's what I have here.
Oh, okay.
Um, and the big twenty-two, twenty thousand increase was all in. It was all on personnel.
Sure.
Yeah. Um.
Well, that was insurance.
Yeah, I think a lot of it was insurance.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
So, yeah, so la- in twenty, um, last year's budget, we budgeted, uh, three hundred and thirteen, three twenty-two.
Most of it was in insurance, yes.
Yeah, a- and, and that's, that's something we gotta, we gotta realize is they do this budget, and then we switched to insurance companies in January. They didn't realize that, and they couldn't have budgeted for that, so we went.
Yeah, but we went down.
What's that?
We went down in premium costs.
But I, I think the cost was for this year.
Yeah.
The reduction in cost was this year.
Yeah.
Not last year.
Yeah, so I think that, and that's, that's what we gotta be wary of, because I know Brian's, Hunos budget was similar. Is though, there, there are several offices that have very, very tight budgets, and when we make a big change like that as commissioners and it costs them ten or twenty thousand dollars more, that's not in their budget, so they're gonna show a loss. And I don't think they should be penalized because their budgets were so tight in the first place, they couldn't absorb it. So that's, that's just another way to look at it.
Well, the difference between her current budget and the requested budget is ten thousand dollars. Of which the majority of it appears to be salary. It just is, and because they're salary, then there's, there's FICA, Medicare, and work with comp, that.
The only, the only red flag I look at on this, on this one, is that I get concerned that when we look at operating expenses, that it's under budgeted.
Exactly.
With elections coming up in twenty-six.
It's under budgeted. It has historically gone over its budgets every year. And so I'm concerned that we have under budgeted, and that's ju- that is just as dangerous
As.
As cutting and going over budget. And so we have to make sure that our budgets are accurate.
That's why I said that, then if we're gonna, if you're gonna cut, uh, each budget like this, then that can, contingent, contingency, I have, I put five hundred thousand in there. That's gonna have to be increased.
Yeah, because then we just operate out of the contingency, and we really don't get a good feel, and we don't really manage our budgets well then. If we, we want to make sure that our budgets are realistic and we stick to them. We don't wanna, you know, be excessive on them, but we also don't want to cut them so much so that all we're doing is trying to make up for revenue that we didn't collect.
And that can only be an increase too. I, I'm not sure what the percentages of
Yeah.
the total budget is what can go into the contingency fund.
What I'm not understanding about your point is where in the hell are revenue gonna come from? If we don't take in as much revenue as we have out.
Let's say we cut the budget.
Doesn't make any difference historically.
Budget by fifty percent. What happens is then we cut the levy. Don too, and yes, we reduce taxes, and, and that doesn't change the expenses that we actually have to incur.
Well, I bet it makes the, uh, the, the voters happy.
Oh, it'll make the voters happy and the county's bankrupt.
Yeah. Well, the county.
And we're not putting gravel on the roads, and we're not picking up bridges, and we're not, uh, upgrading our equipment.
To your, your point, I, I agree with what Ryan's saying, but to, uh, to Don's point too, w- we're talking about two thousand here and, and there. The, the best case, we'll go through this and we might get fifty, sixty thousand dollars in savings.
But what I'm saying is like, that's how it starts.
Two hundred.
We, we do have to keep the budget accurate, and so like when, yeah, when we have all these little amounts happening, like under budgeting and operating out of contingency, it makes our budget look
So then.
Harder to manage.
So, so where do we go when all the contingency options are gone?
Well, according to.
Do a budget supplement.
A what?
Budget supplement.
Where do you get the budget supplement?
Out of the general fund.
Out of the general fund.
General fund will be gone.
And so, and exactly, so right now, if we should approve this, like, look at this one sheet, and we approve those operating expenses, and next year, the operating expenses are actually an extra five thousand. That's an extra five thousand out of the contingency, and that's an extra five thousand towards going out of the general fund.
What would you propose, Ryan?
So what I'm just saying is, I'm, I'm trying to highlight the dangers of like this idea that we can just cut budgets by a raw percent or across the board. or across the board. We have to be realistic. Budgets are as, as planning. So, and I'm just looking at the history here and that's what I'm just, this is an example of that where the his- the history shows that this budget, this nineteen thousand is budgeted for operating expenses, this might be a little low.
I, I. According.
I could put another, I could put, uh, as the years before, I could put another thousand into travel. I could put, um.
Well, twenty-four thousand was personnel and operating expenses is six thousand, so. I, I don't know it needs to be traveled, but.
Do it, so we're, we're now gonna.
Well, that's gonna help the total bud- budget and as a whole.
Is the plan to raise this budget? I mean, Patty's, Patty submitted her budget. I'm fine with it as is and wanting to go on to the next one. I don't think we should be telling her that she needs to increase her budget. I I get what you're saying. I understand, but but I mean, Patty's elected by the, by the people. This is her budget. I'm fine with it. Let's move on.
Okay.
As opposed to, you know, saying, no, you need more in this line and this line.
But I, this, this.
And this is maybe more work for budgets that are.
On the line items at this point.
Can we move to the next one, Mr. Chair?
I'm good with moving on.
So are we leaving it the same then?
I, I, that's my vote.
After ten minutes of nonsense?
And then you'll have to supplement it at the end of the year.
I mean.
Why don't, why don't we?
Thinking, I'm think, if we go to, the next one is elections. I might put, if we can change the supplies of for ballots, up to thirty-five thousand. Because we're gonna have an extra long ballot. And a wide ballot.
I don't know what a wide ballot is.
Well, there's.
But I get a long ballot.
It's like eleven, it's like eleven and by, eleven by seventeen sheet.
I absolutely agree with that. Thirty-five thousand for the, for the ballots.
According to Mr. Ketterings, Yankton County, twenty-twenty-four revenue and expense review.
Ballots come out of supply.
There was eight thousand dollars short in elections in twenty-twenty-four.
So instead of seventy-five hundred, you wanna go to thirty-five thousand?
No, from thirty thousand, she wants to go to thirty-five.
She was totally different.
Cause you're an auditor.
Page two of auditors.
Yeah.
The one that says elections in the upper left-hand corner.
And we have to have the hotspots for the poll books.
We were eight thousand dollars short in the twenty-four budget. She's indicated that year to date, she has spent six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. But this is not an election year. Next year is gonna be an election year.
Yeah.
So thirty, or do you raise it to the thirty-five she's requesting?
I say thirty-five for the, thirty-five for the supplies.
Supplies. We're paying nothing more for poll workers.
So we're, we're going from seventy-five hundred to thirty-five?
You're on the wrong page.
The next page.
Turned a page.
I was looking at the same page.
Yeah, supplies for elections, which is thirty thousand.
On the election.
And we, and Patty said it more realistically, it's thirty-five, which.
Under the auditors tab.
We look at.
Page two.
What we spent in twenty-twenty-four, that seemed to be accurate.
We're, we're increasing the election by five thousand then?
Because they were eight thousand short last year.
Yeah.
Fine, that, bring in the total to.
Five thousand more.
One oh four, three hundred?
Yes.
And I assume on page three, which is the iPads, you need those for elections?
Yes.
Okay. And then the five hundred thousand on the page, I'll just call it page six.
You know, we might.
That's the overage. Okay. Alright, moving on.
I think Patty had some, did you wanna say something about the contingents?
No, I think that's. Okay, it's at five hundred.
Alright. I think now we're on the treasure. This one says July seventh at the bottom stamp. Is that the most recent?
Yeah.
And it appears that her, the majority of her increases in salary adjustments.
Think it's a good budget.
Patty, is this three percent?
Yes.
Okay.
And no steps.
Okay, as is.
Okay.
State's attorney?
Now we have some issues. Do we know what the salaries were in twenty-twenty-five?
Cause I don't. I got nothing.
Into twenty-twenty-four, it was four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Well.
They've had some increases since then.
I'm sorry?
We budgeted for six hundred and twenty-five thousand.
No, we, uh, that was the proposal and that's where we got into a disagreement, I think.
Six twenty-five was the.
Request.
No, that's what you guys approved.
That, I get it. That's what we approved. And then self raises were made in that six hundred and twenty-five because it was approved, as I understand. Maybe I'm wrong.
What do you mean self raises?
I'm sorry?
What do you mean self raises?
Well. Um, as I said, I don't have the twenty-twenty-five, so I don't, or the twenty-twenty-four, I don't know what the twenty-twenty-four, any of this was.
Twenty-twenty-four actual was four ninety-seven, four fifty.
That's, yeah, the actual, that's not.
I'm talking about per each, not per lump. I, because I can read the actual, just as well as you can.
Tyler, are you still planning on hiring another attorney? I know at one point we hired, we authorized you for
Yeah.
Fourth one, like, what's the situation?
So we currently have an intern this summer.
Okay.
Um, the plan is, my hope is that he will come in after he graduates in December, starting in beginning of the year.
And how many full-time employees do you, do you have now? I, I know we, we've kinda added some over the years, it's.
So currently, there's three attorneys, three staff.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Three attorneys, three staff, one diversion coordinator, and then we have Don for poor relief.
In twenty-twenty-four, the actual was, uh.
We know what the actual.
Total of eight.
It was budgeted to this hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, then you added fifty thousand, cause they have fifty in, um, assigned dollars for a new attorney. So you guys added fifty thousand to last year.
So that was for twenty-twenty-five?
Twenty-twenty-four.
Twenty-twenty.
You didn't have the actual.
So we had fifty for the new attorney. Do we know what everybody else earned? Or no? And if you don't know, you say you don't know, cause I don't know.
No, I don't have.
Tyler, I know when you presented, you were talking about a new vehicle, or, or is that still the plan, or will you work with us?
That's not, it's gonna come out of the state's attorney budget.
Okay.
Is that something?
You're taking that out of the diversion bond money, correct?
Correct.
That doesn't require any pre-approval by the commission.
Not if it's under fifty thousand?
Why doesn't the state's attorney's office for the diversion use one of the sheriff's vehicles that he's getting rid of? He's getting rid of an Explorer that's four years old. What's wrong with that?
I believe it's big enough to haul kids to school.
He also has two transport vans that, I was just picking the nicer of the vehicles. So, transport vans, he's getting rid of two. Why don't they drive them around in those?
Suppose we could, that's what we've been using, but I guess it was never offered to my office. He said it was going to surplus to be sold. So.
I think when he came in and presented to us, I don't know if you were here, he said all those vehi- there was a Tahoe, there was Explorer, there are two vans. I think that'd be a wise use of taxpayer dollars if we can recirculate those, especially. Yeah, well, and.
And keep them in the sheriff's meetings.
Let me ask a question, basically. It's transporting kids to school. County function, is that one of our responsibilities?
I think it's potentially our responsibility to try and keep parents out of jail because they're too busy working or doing whatever to get their, make sure their children go to school. I get it.
Just like any of the other given's.
And try to keep our juvenile detention costs down.
Well, but, but where, to Don's point, where does it end? We feed them, we clothe them. What are we gonna start buying houses for people next? May- maybe if the parents aren't doing it, maybe they, they need to suffer the consequences for.
You know, I can speak for, you know, the school districts or, um, those parties, but from what I've heard, they appreciate the service that the county provides to get those kids to school. They see a turnaround in those kids' behaviors. We're keeping them out of the criminal justice system. And when the parents are failing, you know, getting them to school, the least, you know, the community could do, cause it's an asset to the community to have these kids educated, get them into school. If you're in school, you're not out in the street causing crime. But also the fact that diversion also through the programming gets re- reimbursed through the county through the program, so.
Do you know, and maybe Deb knows this, cause she used to be a teacher, um, does the Yankton Public School District throw any money at making sure kids get to school? Even though they appreciate it that they're there, since they get federal funding?
I have no.
Like likely the answers don't.
Well, don't they do in, in-town busing? And then there's also the transit. But from what I understand, it, it, what we're doing is going to the house and sometimes people are going in the house, waking up the kid, getting them dressed, and then driving them to school. Right, to Don's point, it's, that seems like.
We got.
Yeah.
Is that, is that a, is that a function of the diversion program though?
Yeah.
Yeah. Taking, making sure they go to school? Yeah, cause most of the time it's not the kids' fault that they're not getting to school.
But is the other twenty-two thousand people that live in Yankton County, is it their responsibility? Cause somebody's so damn lazy, they won't get up and, and get their kids up in the morning?
And you know, the per, the, the cost that will fund this program, again, is out of the diversion expenses that we get from the state and through bond forfeitures. You know, county taxpayer money is being used for this program. It's being funded through independent means such as grants and bond forfeitures.
How much do we get from the state in diversion funds in twenty-twenty-four?
I believe it's like seventy-five thousand dollars. Seven, it was last year, seven hundred and fifty dollars per successful diversion. We don't know what the number's gonna be this year.
Successful diversion?
Successful.
How many have we had?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but seventy, seventy, seven hundred and fifty per student or per successful diversion, so we had at least a hundred. So it's a successful program. One, Yankton's one of the leading diversion programs in the state. So, I.
And I'm, I'm happy for that. I'm glad it is, but we got twenty-five areas that are, people are doing good things in the community and they're likely gonna get cut.
Yeah, but our goal is to keep the diversion program a self-sufficient program that's self-funded.
Well, it's not really self-funding.
It's funded.
By people who don't show up for court is what it's funded.
Also funded through state programming.
So I've had two people that didn't show up who have generously donated twenty-five thousand to your fund.
Is there, have you heard anything? Is the state planning on at least now continuing that funding? And they're cutting a lot of other programs. Is, is that on the chopping block? I know we don't know.
Yeah, we don't know for sure. I did get an email last week
Yeah.
to submit the applications for this year, so I know they're taking applications again, you know.
And that's, that's with not just this program, but every program is.
We're getting off course here a little bit, guys. We need to keep moving on this budget. But as to the concern for the salaries, the number that was submitted, and I submitted a three percent with no step, so it's their current grade with a three percent increase. So that's where I got the number from.
And that, that funding for the fourth attorney, that'll only be used if you hire?
Correct.
And if they need it.
And if we need it.
Yeah, but who decides if they need it?
I do.
What do you mean you do?
Yeah.
Well, if their budget's in the hole, then I'll put it in there.
Well, if he just randomly hires somebody for seventy-seven thousand dollars, you have no say in that.
No, not that. I'm saying the money. I will put the money in.
Well, yeah, I'm more concerned about the fact that we went from four hundred and.
So that's fifty.
Whatever we went from. Nope.
So, so.
Four hundred and ninety-seven to six hundred and twenty-five. That's what my concern was. And I'm, I get somehow that slipped through in twenty-twenty-five. I get that.
In twenty-twenty-five is originally requested was seven hundred and forty-seven.
I get that.
We cut that down to six twenty-five.
I get that.
Yeah.
And then he can use that money allocated within, I'm guessing, my understanding is he allocated that money as he saw fit.
I believe we're under budgeted.
Yep.
So the new number for wages for the state's attorney's office is going to be what? Nine, twelve, three oh six?
No, eight, thirty-seven, five, fifty-six, if you include the benefits.
That's this sheet added up?
If, no, you look.
No, it's the sheet.
It's six fifty-eight, five thirty-three. That says not include retirement, FICA, unemployment. It's on the far right inside.
Eight thirty-seven.
Yeah, this is the new.
For per, yeah, for personnel, the eight thirty-seven, five, five, six? That's the.
With the benefits.
So, yeah.
Salary alone is six fifty-eight.
That's a twenty-five, uh, yeah, no, oh, never mind.
Well, let's see. It's a thirty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollar increase, which presumably the majority of it goes to the new attorney, I would guess, since the new attorney was only approved up to fifty.
No, the new attorney last year was approved, whatever the first step is on the pay matrix. When I submitted the budget last year, I put it for step zero of grade thirteen.
But you didn't pay out any money to that person, so all that money went to the ones that are there, correct?
Sure.
Well, it might stay, stayed in the salary budget.
I get it stayed in the salary budget, but it was reallocated in such a way that had a new attorney been hired, we wouldn't probably be having this discussion.
I do have a question. Why the five thousand dollar increase for repairs and maintenance?
five thousand dollar increase for repairs and maintenance?
That is to take into account any maintenance that needs to be done on the vehicle.
Any what?
Maintenance that needs to be done on the vehicle, a new vehicle, if we get one.
Could that come out of diversion expense, the maintenance?
Probably good.
Because we'll give you the van.
Yeah.
So we can use that for maintenance.
Yeah. There's, that was a thought, maintenance, insurance, whatever.
We could ask the sheriff, he's got it on a regular routine, if he will keep it on that routine.
Maintenance.
Because I, the maintenance routine, because I know that Tyler had indicated that none of the ones out here, he trusted because he didn't know when they were used last.
I don't think the assessors office does either.
The drive around town.
John.
To go out of town.
That five thousand that's added to maintenance came out of professional services, so really we just took five thousand out of one part and put it in different, so it's really the same.
As, Tyler, as far as books, like what's the realistic number you need? Because I see most years you don't use anything, and then in twenty-twenty-four, you spent two hundred and forty-nine dollars. But you're asking for four thousand, like what, what do you, what do you realistically think you're gonna need for that?
So it's hard to go off the old numbers because up until recently, and I'm not blaming anybody, but.
Because what?
Because I'm not, I'm not blaming a particular office or person, but sort of was getting taken out of different line items than what they should have been.
Okay.
So those books could have been taken out of either supplies or something else. Now that, when I'm going through each expense that I sign off on, I make sure it comes out of the right budget. So as I talked about last time, uh, four books right now will cost two thousand dollars. Each book is about five, five hundred bucks apiece. We have to buy every year because laws get updated.
But why do we need four?
One for each attorney and then one for the staff up front.
You can't share?
Different, not efficient trying to hunt down books.
Well, you do most of your stuff on the laptop and online.
Still use the book.
But what, what could you live with on that one? What could you live with? I know you're asking for, you've, you've never been anywhere, you're that, would you live with two?
Well, I would say this year we've already went past that because only two thousand was budgeted for books. And so now that we have those four books, we also, uh, there's some other books that came out as well. So I, I believe the four thousand is appropriate because of that.
Does that car, carpal system, we, that doesn't have those books in it, or?
No, that comes out of, uh, professional, really professional services.
What's, what comes out of insurance? Because there's this like, that's history, that's very erratic up and down.
What do you mean insurance?
Malpractice insurance, probably.
Liability insurance is okay.
Malpractice insurance.
Okay.
Not you don't know.
Yeah. That'll increase if we get another attorney.
What?
So that will increase if we get another attorney.
Hey, where are we at on state's attorneys? Are we good, good with the updated?
What's your update?
I mean, the updated sheet, the new sheet.
I don't know. I don't really what we can cut. I mean, I just, I understand the situation with books and maybe that's gonna be coming out of there, but I mean, it's never been anywhere near that.
I think the only one I might recut is that repair and maintenance back to the seventy-five hundred, but.
What are you thinking? What are you thinking on that?
Going back, just back to the seventy-five hundred, it seems that that would probably be in line with the averages over the last five years and.
From, from twelve, five to seventy-five?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I could support that. I mean.
Yeah. It's, it's one of those harder budgets, because, yeah, the years fluctuate a lot, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
What about supplies? What is that for?
What are supplies for?
Yeah, we use thirty-six, three thousand dollars worth of supplies. You asked for eighty-five last year. Now you want ten.
That's taking into account inflation.
Well, it's only year-to-date, Wanda, the three thousand.
I am aware.
Okay, so you're aware then?
I, I think that, I think that's line, that's in line, I think the supplies number.
Twenty twenty-four was eleven, eight.
Yeah, and in twenty twenty-four, we budgeted six, it was budgeted at six. So that means six thousand out of the contingency, six thousand spent over budget.
Yeah.
I don't, other than that, other than that, I don't think there's anything I could change. I don't know.
Can I just advise, I know we just, you know, engaged in contract with a new IT company, but we're on the later end of some IT stuff in our office. I know a program or what we want to do is try to update hardware in the safety center, which includes IT services for internet. I know bandwidth is an issue that our old IT people have flagged as an issue, but they never got around to fixing it. And so I would just ask that you keep in mind, um, the need to update the hardware in the safety center for IT purposes. My office relies extraordinarily on the internet in our office. And so, in, uh, trouble-free service would be tremendous. And just please take into account the need that we might need to be updating some hardware this year.
And that'll, that'll be one of those places where we'll really hopefully be able to take advantage of that secure South Dakota program.
So let's keep that in mind before you make cuts at the IT services and hardware in our, they need to be updated. Which will come under maintenance and repairs.
Hey, I've had a request for a five-minute break.
Are we moving, are we moving to the next one or?
I make a request for a five-minute break then.
Okay.
All right.
Is there a second or do you want?
Do we need it? I don't think we need him.
Should not need to have.
No, no, no motion.
Are we good with this budget and move on to the next, or what, what are we going to do?
State's attorney, we're done.
Done with that one. And the only action on that is.
Do we have to move to go back into regular session or no?
Yeah, I think state's attorneys were good with everything except that five thousand dollars reduction on the first plane.
Fine, I think it's good. Anybody sees, sees anything else?
We good with that one? We gonna move on to the safety center then? We're just gonna approve them all, let's just stamp it and get it done.
Yeah, I'm good with the government buildings, both the center and the safety center.
And the safety center.
Director of equalization?
The only question.
Going back to the safety center, how many employees is that, hundred twenty-nine thousand higher?
Safety center?
Three and a half, not?
Two and a half, yeah.
Director of equalization?
The only, um, question I had, and, and, you know, Michelle brought it up, and it, it kind of made sense, but I thought about it as, uh, she was gonna do twenty thousand dollars more for Napa Junction, but I'm wondering if maybe that, and that makes sense to do that, but I wonder if that twenty thousand shouldn't be in the commission budget instead? Because each year they do that, and, and they've done a really good job about not having these lawsuits. You know, just a thought.
I.
I mean, because they may not use it too.
No, well, she, she's planning on doing it preemptively because you know it's gonna happen because they already started to go down that road.
Last year.
Last year. And so we know it's coming. And so she was going to go and get that third-party assessment so that we're prepared, rather than trying to do it last minute, and do it within a budget. So that we are budgeted for it and not running out of budget or doing it outside of budget.
And, and, and that makes sense to me, but, but also it's, um, there's been very small amount of professional services ever in that department, and I hate, I hate to then have that budget go up.
Oh, that's definitely, that is definitely something.
And so, so maybe I'm saying is maybe earmark that, but have it under the commission and pay it out of the commission if it happens.
It would be good to like, just put that under, it would be good just to, uh, have a note of that. I mean, I already noted it here in writing here on mine that
Yeah.
they increased there, but yeah, to make sure that next year on the budget, it would go back down.
Yeah, and then that would, that would just be my thing is I would almost.
You just gotta remember to do that.
I would almost prefer if we could move that to professional services for us to expend it rather than, than them. That would be a wish that I guess I would have, but.
I don't know. I, I, it's definitely a direct cost to the equalization and.
And then the software licensing, you know, a lot of that has been zero.
And that's because we moved, that's because we moved, because they do spend a lot on their unspecialized software, and so.
No, I agree.
That category did not exist in the previous years.
Yeah. But this, yeah, this year is, you know, it'd almost be easier, Ryan, and I don't know if you've thought about it. Just to, you know, licensing under IT or something.
Well, this is a specialized software specific to their department. All the other general, uh, software that is used across the entire county should be under an IT budget. But when you have a specific, uh, so specifically like Beacon and some of the arches software, that should be going in to the department that it's.
I, I do think that thirty-nine could maybe be bumped down a little bit to thirty or thirty-five. I think that'd be more than enough, because we're, you know, we're nowhere, we're halfway through the year and we're, you know.
That's not, yeah, but this is not inaccurate. Um, you look at the years past, you have to look at the line above repairs and maintenance, because that's where that money was, used to be taken out of. And so you're looking at the line above, and every year that's been over forty thousand.
Yeah, but, but now if we combine, combine repairs and maintenance and software, we're, you know, almost at fifty.
I would, I would rather, I would rather look at taking the, uh, repairs and maintenance down and not the software. Because that software is a very, very static.
What do you want to do with repairs and maintenance and, what number are you thinking?
Well, there you could possibly go, and it's again hard because these categories were blended up until now.
Do you like five? Because they're not gonna be any big building or anything.
Big, the big expense that she's been having out of that repairs and maintenance is the repairs of vehicles that she has.
What do you think, five thousand? That should cover anything?
I mean.
Yeah, any major repairs that need to be made, they should go out to the county shed.
Five thousand, okay with you?
Uh, I don't know, because some of her vehicles, it's like, that's one repair on one vehicle. Sometimes, a smaller, yeah, and, well. You know, I I would probably.
Does it? I mean, we got it. We gotta do something, you know.
And I I I could go down to seventy-five hundred.
How about seven and we move on?
Okay, seven.
Okay, seven for that one.
Okay. And we move on.
And then and then for education expense, I know they they separated travel. And education expense.
That was a request last year.
So. But I mean, I.
They do have required education and most of them they can't do online yet.
They've they've, you know, never came anywhere near twenty thousand though for that. I I don't know. That's probably okay.
In the past, okay, again, you got to look at the travel again from the past. Um, fifteen, ten, that depends on if they have a set, if they have changeover in assessors.
To re- to recertify.
Recertified. Um, they have required recertifications every year. And it's not a, and it doesn't track as a, you know, six months, you're halfway through the budget.
We did nine and nine on each of those. That should be fine. You guys be all right with that?
I'll be fine with nine and nine. Let's move on.
Let's move on then. All right. I'm good with that one then.
Okay.
Uh, register of deeds.
Do we have a new one of them without steps?
No, he doesn't have a new one.
Ryan, was your original one, was that with or without steps? I guess I'm looking for it here. Or you have, you have it right here, I guess. I got that. This, the new one I got says. No steps on that one.
Yep, I think there's one. Oh, okay, he does have a new one.
Do we have a new one?
I don't have.
I don't have a new one. I don't know.
Basically, what it's about is a four hundred ninety-one dollar decrease from my current year budget. By removing, I removed the three thousand dollars per step from the free employee.
And this is another one where there's just.
Oh, yeah.
You know, very, very frugal budget and I don't think there's anything that.
Maybe ones that were.
We're gonna be able to.
I didn't see it in the new ones that were handed out.
Patty took my top.
Oh, three percent no steps.
Yeah.
Okay.
Insurance.
Five hundred and nine.
What what's the insurance cost? What's your insurance cost? No, operating expenses, insurance. Just noticing it's very, it's been very steady, but then it did a jump last in twenty twenty-four.
Which line are you on, Ryan?
Okay.
Operating expenses.
Operating expense, insurance.
Well, that's the insurance that we're getting. We used to get through Smith. Now we're getting through this.
Yeah.
And it was fifteen hundred that one year, but I understood that was from a one, the first year, it was a first year, it's gonna be higher.
Okay.
And then going forward is going to be lower, so I brought that down to a thousand.
Okay.
We we had to do that.
Yeah, yeah, I was just making sure that we had enough budgeted there. Yeah.
Good question.
I'm I'm fine with this one unless somebody's got to change. See anywhere we can do anything. Move on to. Next one.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
There's doesn't have a lot of. Sheriff, did you want to move to the?
Veterans?
Yes.
Yep.
He doesn't have a new one.
Okay.
His was calculated.
His was three percent.
Another one where it pretty small budget. I don't. You know. I know he he upped his travel a little bit because to go to those trainings and certifications and I know there's a lot of. Uh, new. Plans to do with the. Uh, promise to address comprehensive toxins or PACT Act.
I'm good with this one.
All right.
Are we in the process of? That's probably too far out of the view here, but. Uh, joining with one or two other counties on that veteran service.
I'm.
And their sole expense might be low.
Uh, they're not, I understand they're not inclined to throw in any money.
Well, it's being worked on.
It's not a done deal, though.
No, no, it it isn't and, you know, it's it's tough because most of those guys come here anyway. So unless we're willing to not allow that anymore, that might clamp it down.
Yeah.
You know, if we're willing to do that, but.
Up here.
Run, Sheriff, but I don't see a new one for him at three percent. Did he do a three percent?
No, yes. You won't have a new pool.
Sheriff.
Yeah, you should have new ones.
I don't.
For that in jail.
There's a new one for him in the jail.
Is it? Can you show me what it looks like?
I'll get it for you. Okay, before you. Did you have a Wanda? Did you, and Brian?
I don't have one yet. Anybody looks like. Um. Yeah, I don't.
It's because I've got three of the other one.
You flipped all of ours, Wanda.
Well, we got, I got three of the other ones and none of this one. Office of the sheriff, but that's old.
Uh, Ryan, question is the.
I don't want you to blame me for.
What?
Kicked out of supper. But it's. From here to your house, it's more than two minutes.
Ryan, for for computer services, he doesn't have a budget for twenty twenty-six. Is that going into IT then?
That's, we'd like to move that into IT for a lot of that. So that's what I, again, I talked to Preston, it's like. When they have specialized things that goes under their budget, but the general. Service, the general IT would try to move that into the general IT budget. Especially like trying to combine some of that work that would be done with the state's attorney and. And. That's a building as a whole, so.
I I know his his travel. Slash training budget went up, but I I'll have, we'll have to ask Patty. I I think how this particular department does it is when they have to. Go fly and pick up a prisoner from across the country, they put that in their travel. It's not, it's not like another department that's going to training like that.
Well, actually, sometimes they do actually go to training. And they usually do, as I understand, they usually do that in fear.
Okay.
It's not like they're traveling typically to Washington to pat each other on the back.
No, that's correct, but they do need to. This year we went to California and to Houston, Texas to pick you up.
Well, because. Somebody wanted them prosecuted and according to the sheriff, there was a victim within the confines of the area.
I I get that, but last year we cut the travel expense down, not realizing that's worth that goes into also.
Well, perhaps the state's attorney's office could banish those people and then we wouldn't have to go get them.
Make it illegal to commit crime, Tyler. Only it was that easy.
I'm sorry?
Did you have a copy of that one?
I have a copy of. His old jail budget, his new jail budget. His wages.
And you have them all at the three percent?
New one.
No, this is the four percent. This is what I had because I wrote on it yesterday.
So you don't have a new.
I have his new wages and that's it. I do have the weed board one, though. I say we just stiff with that.
Coroner.
Why are we giving them a twenty thousand dollar increase?
Who who are we talking about?
Coroner. I shouldn't say giving them. Why are they asking for a twenty thousand dollar increase?
Well, their total budget of twenty-one thousand.
Well, let me, current budget wages fifteen up to twenty-one.
No. Don't they get paid by the call?
I don't know.
I will have to ask Patty. I'm pretty sure that we pay them by the call, but.
We anticipating a lot more dead people?
We hope not.
I think that's based on the year, on the twenty twenty-four actual was twenty-one thousand.
Yeah. We can ask Patty on this one, but.
And you look at twenty twenty-three, it's eighteen thousand, twenty twenty-four, we budgeted only fifteen thousand.
And the professional services, Tyler, is that for autopsies? Do you know? That wouldn't come out of the coroner's budget.
I believe it does. I believe it is.
Well, I would assume that if it's an unattended death and somebody just dies at their house, they eyeball them and. Then say. We might need a. Unless they have a needle sticking out of their arm or a gun, a hole in their head. Um, then they wouldn't need an autopsy. But if there's no apparent reason, don't you have to, since it's an unattended death, don't you have to have an autopsy?
I I actually looking this over and I don't think I got an issue with it because. I will ask Patty, but I believe they're paid per call and. Um, a flat fee. Gary, do you have that information by chance? Uh, I guess we can come back to it too, but we hope this is one that we are well below budget on.
Ambulance. Some of the costs too are transportation costs. So we pay a funeral home to go pay somebody somewhere comes out of that.
Yeah.
Well, it makes sense.
Yeah, I think the two biggest one are the professional services and the salary. So. Patty question, the coroner, we pay by the hour or by per call? How do we pay them?
Yeah, by call.
Okay. So I I know.
Well, you said an amount for her for Erica.
And we we do that in the resolution at the beginning of the year.
I, yeah.
Yeah, and then when do we pay for autopsies? Do you know that? And is that? Just whenever we're told to do an autopsy?
It's usually court ordered.
Okay.
Let me make it.
Um, are we done with the sheriff?
No.
I'm gonna give you a new copy here.
Have we talked about the jail administrator?
No, we haven't. We'll have, we gotta come back to that. Where she's printing stuff out for us.
Because he just sent those that you have.
But he said it.
And I had to put them on.
He said it with no increase, not even the three percent. So that wouldn't be right, would it?
It's like there's a. Supplies, I guess. I don't know. I'm sure they go through a lot of supplies there. The first responder supplies. Requesting zero for that one.
Are you looking at ambulance?
Yeah, that's what we're, you know. Rest on zero.
He said.
Okay, thank you.
I don't. Are you looking at the same one I'm looking at?
He's looking at ambulance.
What? I'm looking at ambulance.
I guess the machinery and auto equipment is that, like, is there a vehicle planning on being purchased or what is forty-two, seven, fifty? Do we know what that is?
Yeah, he wants a new ambulance.
You know, I I guess I'm not really. A fan of that, so I think we.
Where where are you at?
The, um, if you go on the third paragraph tangible goods halfway down, we're forty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Machinery and auto equipment.
Yeah, he asked. Or that's a lease payment. No.
My sheet chose forty.
No, forty-two, seven, fifty. That's because he wants to buy a new ambulance.
Well, it's actually more, well, and that's kind of a little bit of a concern because we ask him to cut to three percent and then they're adding stuff, but. So he asked for forty in the first one and now this next one, it's forty-two, seven, fifty.
Remember two, he said that there was the last. The last budget from last from twenty twenty-four was all kind of messed up. So we had to fix that, so.
So there's, and there's, there's seventy thousand dollars set aside for of the, of chassis.
Yes, well, there's more than that. There's a hundred.
Where's that at? Where's that at on this? Is that in this budget or is it?
Or the evidence.
Yeah.
The account, the accumulation.
Okay.
It's in the general fund. That's what you guys, remember that you guys stopped doing it this year.
Okay. Patty, do you, you don't know what that, uh, in the machinery equipment that forty thousand is for? Because.
Is it part of that, um. Part of that new ambulance? Like something. That goes to it.
Would that be the power lift? I know he was talking about that, but. When it's. Well, I mean, we didn't spend anything in twenty twenty-four. There were, we didn't get budget for it. There's no expense. I just, I'm wondering why that's kind of sticking out to me. I guess maybe we get rid of that and if they.
Forty-two, seven.
Well.
You're talking about the.
In the, in the original one, it was forty, but in the new one, it's forty-two, seven, fifty. Maybe we we get rid of that and if that's something that they need, they'll come in and tell us.
Well, again. We need to know what the plan was there for that. I mean, is forty-two, seven, fifty the more accurate number that they had that they got? Or. You know, we want this to be. I think accuracy is the most important thing here. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. The June twenty-three, twenty twenty-five letter from S, from Arrow. He won a hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars for a new remount. They'll give us a twenty thousand dollar break because we're repeat customers. And thirty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars for the lift assist. Or two hundred and six thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars.
I think that's probably what it is for the lift, but if we have a quote for thirty-one, why are we just throwing another ten thousand in there?
Because I think what he's doing is he's taking the whole number and dividing it over four years.
You know, and and again, you know, the ambulance isn't important, but I I think it's, it's. You know. One of these, uh. Ones that actually costs the county to operate and. What with the big beautiful bill that they propose, I believe there's a trillion dollars coming out of Medicaid. And if we don't think that's gonna severely impact. The revenue that we're bringing in, we're living in a dream world.
But a lot of that revenue is that's coming out of Medicaid is supposedly covering illegal immigrants.
We have those in our community too. And then.
Not a million dollars worth.
Well. If it's a hundred thousand dollars and then our own state is proposing on a ballot to, you know, to do the work requirement, which I personally believe in, but. Those people don't quit, go into the hospital and go using the ambulance when they don't have any insurance and when there's no insurance covering it, we eat the whole bill. And we should be predicting. And we should be predicting that that's going to be this. And I mean, about what four years ago, Don, we were running a pretty big uh, pretty big number in the red. It was much higher than 300,000 and very well could I predict it's gonna. I predicted it'll do that again. And I'm just, we need to go into that with that.
Unfortunately, with Simples closing, a lot of what might otherwise be considered as illegal immigrants have now moved to Missouri. We have less of them here and we're not the huge population hub that we're quite the cocaine and methamphetamine center of the universe.
So is is that 40,000?
Sometimes feels like that on Thursday afternoon.
Is that $40,000 line item the only thing that you were questioning or?
Yeah, that and maybe the 5,000. But I mean, I would like to, you know, cut that 40,000. And if it's something that Troy really needs, then we can adjust that when we approve the final budget. It's kind of hard to know what it is. And I don't want to.
I I understand that. And that was going to be my recommendation.
Yeah, I would. I would go along with that if we want to do that. And.
So, yeah, I I don't question the 5,000. Um, we already we could. We have a zero budget in there and we already spent 1,500 this year. That's again, obviously, there is a budget need there.
To keep that one five, is that what?
Yes, keep that at a five. The 42,750, I just would like to understand where that number comes from, just like Dan.
Well, let's let's go for zero. So we can do the provisional budget like the chair said. And if that needs to go back up, we'll adjust that before we do the final budget approval. Would that work with everybody? Would that be okay?
That's fine. But if you look at the last page of his proposal, that's he's asking to put money aside for a new ambulance remount.
Well, and I.
Pretty clear.
That's.
Well, we're gonna we're gonna need to look at a new ambulance sooner than later, but I'm not saying we gotta do it this year.
I don't think Patty said that this is not for that because we do the county accumulation fund. We do that for emergency management and we do it for the ambulance where we put money in. That goes to the ambulance, not this. This is for something else and nobody knows what it is. So that I guess.
Then just approve it the way it is. Let's approve the whole thing the way it is.
40,000. We don't know what it's for. I guess I'm I'm not comfortable with that, but could we call Troy and ask him quick?
Do we have a we have money going into an accumulation budget for the same attorney already there? Okay. If that's the case, then take then we don't. Then we can take this to zero because then we don't know where it's at. And if there is something that they fail to put in, if we put it to zero, then they will come and tell us.
Yes, well, exactly.
Okay, so I'm good with taking that to zero.
Okay. Don, you okay with that?
Sure.
Hey, Troy. Question on budgeting for you've got $40,000 for machinery and auto equipment. What is that entail? Power lifts. Okay. Yeah, that's what we needed to know. Yeah. That's for basically equipment, power lifts for the.
See, I would I would prefer to take it out of the I would out of that accumulation because if it's for the ambulance rather than.
Well, I think that for that chassis is more is like what's in what's in there. That's what.
Yeah.
So there's no extra.
I don't have a problem setting that to 20 and seeing what what he's gonna do with it. Because if he's.
Every one of our ambulances have a power lift on it.
Only two of them do.
Okay.
But you don't need a power lift for I know they want one for everyone, but you don't have to have one for.
How do you know before you leave which ambulance to take? Because you don't know how heavy they are.
Take the one with the power.
But it might be on a trip to Seafolds. And I'm not saying we got to buy two powerless right away because they're about $30,000 cases, what he said.
So but why couldn't we take that out of the county accumulation? It's for the ambulance and part of the chassis that's getting remounted. But yeah, I'm fine. 20,000 and let's move on then. You okay with that, Ryan? But that's all right. So that 20,000. All right.
We're gonna go back to sheriff. Is that okay?
I don't know if this is a new piece of paper that I have. But it appears to be the jail administrator. And I don't know if this is old because it talks about 2015. Not sure why I have 2015. Because it also has 2014 in it. No. Higher date. Name 2014, 2015, and then some random column over here with a bunch of numbers in it. This must be old because it still has Stuart Howell as the jail administrator.
Do we have the actual 2024 numbers? It's like he just said the budgeted 2024 numbers on the on the columns here.
I think I got my actual. 2024 actual was 1,073.
That was.
That was.
That was.
Well, 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 let's just look.
For the actual.
Well, we have what we had 2024 budget, 2024 actual numbers are exactly the same. I just find it unlikely that we uh, precisely spent every penny of the budget.
Well, if there's a penny left, they'll spend it.
Yeah, that's kind of why I don't really maybe like the way he does it because it's hard to.
So, okay, but for the salary, but like every number throughout the whole operating, the entire column is exactly as a budget.
407317. Is totaled.
Okay, but like I'm looking at the 2024 approves what we approved and the numbers are exactly the same of the actual column.
He he does it different than Patty's printout.
I know. I know. What I'm looking for is the actual what he actually spent in 2020.
Do you want her to print out this copy of this? Because Patty could print this out.
What I'm looking for is the actual spent because every one of these are down to exactly the budget on the actual column. And then we don't have a history to really judge where where the lines line up.
I don't have it either, so.
Yeah, it's over.
Bond is.
Uh, give you that mixture report.
Uh. Look at the.
But what did we decide on the ambulance? We get rid of that 42?
Actual, what do you want, Ryan?
The 2024 numbers of that actual Ben.
No, I'm not.
For total personnel.
I don't.
I was looking at the line so that I can kind of see what the how historically it has been spent.
The total that was spent for personnel was 1,266,929.
Okay, but I don't have any of the breakdowns.
Well, this doesn't either. Yeah, he wouldn't have had any uh. Oh, he might have. Because this is the original, like the 198. So he has some or he had insurance that came in. That's the unanticipated revenue.
Yeah, or the uh, yeah, yeah.
You can have the 2014. That's very helpful.
Oh, I already have that. Thanks.
So it's even tell us who it is. We're gonna we're gonna guess it's the treasure.
We got.
Oh, just a random piece of paper with a bunch of numbers on it. No. No department.
Do we have any questions on the sheriff's budget or we're gonna go on to the jail?
That's a treasure, old one. Now the new one has a treasure on it.
Are we? Are we on the jail budget? Or Ryan, were you looking at something today or?
I'm just looking at the line by line. And make. Hey. All right, I think I'm okay with the sheriff's budget. It's close enough.
On to the jail?
Yeah.
Operating expenses really went up a lot.
Yeah.
The professional services, and I believe that's the nurse practitioner that they have that that I believe accounts for most of that $100,000 extra cost. And then maintenance.
I think some of that also includes Wilson Clark coming over for in-house visits.
Yeah.
But we took we took $50,000 off of there.
Up there where?
It was for the maintenance contracts. He had 63,000. And for some reason, it's down to 13,000.
For 2026?
I think we got rid of the rugged replacement.
Yeah, that was probably.
Could be. I don't know, but it the 667 would still have the 63,000 number in it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the 667 500 should really only be six 17,500.
So you're talking maintenance and contract. It went from 25 last year to 63. Do we want to keep it at the 63 or do we?
No, he's got penciled in here. He's got it crossed out. He's got 13,000.
Well, that's a big savings.
So which would bring the total number of operating expenses down to 617,500.
Good. That helps. And I.
And that carries through to the bottom number as well.
I'm sure it does. Yes.
Yes.
So you're saying that.
Nevermind. It's 25.
Yeah.
I'm good with jail one. We want to go to juvenile detention. I don't think there's really much we want to.
Which one?
Juvenile detention budget proposal.
It is just. It is what it is till you can fix them.
24 24 seven budget program. I'm fine with that E911.
You're gonna, don't worry about that one. That's not.
We have no control over.
Well, you guys still have to decide.
Oh, I know, but.
What you want to give the city.
So.
Oh, we're on to the city. I thought we were talking about juvenile detention.
No.
So we're on to the extension budget now, correct, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Extension. Ryan, did you have any?
Um, so as you know, Katie's leaving. Um, which will leave us without an extension. Extension. The state themselves put themselves into a hiring freeze. They have no position open for or assistance at the moment. So and no future plans for any help neither. Pretty uh slim. Um. But when I when I talked to Katie to put this budget together, uh, we just discussed doing a single person at uh, a one full-time person instead of a full-time and a half-part-time. Um, that does cut the budget down quite a bit. Um.
How about we operated under just a full-time person for the last year?
Pretty much.
Kind of.
Longer than that.
Well, for about a year. Yeah. And it's been it. It does make it harder to run some of the programs. But the state is is willing to help us out a lot more if we have a full-time person than what a single full-time person and working on bringing possibly some state interns to help.
I don't know. I'll I'll believe that when I see that from the state, but I get what you're saying.
Can we move the extension office downstairs?
I think you can't move. I don't think that's going to work unless the contact center moves.
They.
There's a rumor that the contact center is moving.
Well.
I I guess don't know if we can justify, you know, for the uh, repairs and maintenance and and some of that's in the grounds maintenance to have that building. Uh, and it's it's pretty clear. I don't know. Something needs to happen. I I would almost like to do something like we did with the soil conservation and just offer, you know, extension 4H, you know, here is X amount of dollars. You guys run your program. We support you. But as far as a full-time employee in there, I don't know. You know, because like you said, we you have to have two full-time people.
We would be the only. We would be the only county then without an ex without an ex extension person for 4H.
We'd be we'd still be supporting them.
But we would.
Yeah.
There's no guarantee that there's any hire or any person coming in. We would be the only county in that operating like that. The only county in the state in the in the state of South Dakota, the only county. But currently, there is nine counties that do exactly what we do today where they hire. They're.
Maybe we should talk to Clay County or Bonhoe County and see if they'll share their extension.
So Clay County, um, they have an extension from the state. They actually share with one extension from the state with Union. That position is actually currently unfilled, so they are operating without a person right now.
But then somebody from.
They have temporary.
And someone from Knox County come move over to one county?
But.
I thought.
They're they're getting some assistance, but they don't have a full-time person yet for Clay County and Union.
Full time for extension and 4H or just extension?
For extension and 4H.
I don't know. I we we probably need to do something. I don't know. I, we, we probably need to do something different. Uh, again, support the program, but you know, I think the state's trying to kill it off as evident that they, you're saying they got to hire and freeze. They're not bringing any people in. You know, what, what are we supposed to? I mean, I don't think we can justify two full-time people like we had.
I, I, I agree with you there. And I've already talked to the four H leaders and they are willing to step up if we have one person to try to supplement.
Yeah, but do they expect us to continue to do the utilities, the assurance and the maintenance? Why don't we just move extension downstairs when the contact center moves out? And they can come have their four H meetings downstairs?
And they could.
Well, they can have their, they can have their four H meetings out in the, in the, in their building.
Well, that's fine, but do we, do we have to continue to fund this?
I, I just, I don't know.
You would still, we would still be on, we would still see the funding of the personnel services, which is out of the hundred and seventeen thousand budget. That's seventy-five thousand. That's the majority of the budget is still in that person. Um, you'd also still see some of the operating expenses in there, but.
I mean, but for, you know, I don't, it's not quite forty thousand, but that, that's a huge amount for a, a building that really sits empty ninety percent of the time.
When I did the math, when I did the math earlier this year, um, if we gave back the building and we tried to move Katie here and gave her office here, we could probably save around, I'm, I'm ballparking it into that twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a year. That's, that's the, that's all. And at that point, we have cut it to the bulk.
No. I would support that plan, to tell you the truth.
However, we, that will still not work with contact center being downstairs, downstairs. Putting four H in the contact center in that close of vicinity can really compromises both of their uh, missions.
Well, why don't we put them in the old state's attorney's office?
Yeah, but I think that's enough.
Which has bulletproof glass.
They, in that, they, the contact center might have to move. I mean, they're using it for storage, but I think that'd be a good place to, to use it.
I.
Do we know if and or when the contact center is going to make up a decision? In talking with the sheriff, who indicated he was on the board of the contact center, he said they were close to an agreement, but it wasn't disclosable yet. If they're close to an agreement, that would hint that they're moving away.
There is, if we, if we stick with this budget, which is, we push this down as far as down. So this is a budget, you know, from two years ago, we have cut seventy thousand dollars off the budget from twenty twenty-four.
Are you, are you saying just, just do the seventy-five thousand salary and then?
No, I'm talking about the.
He wants the whole budget, the whole one seventeen.
One full person at three percent and sticking to that, that does not preclude that we could still go down the route if, and after the contact center moves.
Yeah, I, I guess I, I can't justify.
Again, this is the budget. This is, this is, we have to be accurate to what the plan, what the most likely thing will happen and how to keep this going forward and how to fund it.
Yeah.
It's the most likely, we have, the most likely what's going to happen is that we have to keep funding this at least part of the year next year.
Why?
I mean, this, the, the, this conversation's been going, it's gotta be close to a year it's been going on.
This, it's like this, we're talking about whether we are going to fund four H or not at this point.
Now, I, I don't, I don't see it that way. I see it, are, are we gonna provide a, a building and full-time staff? I mean, there, there's a lot of good nonprofits out there. Four H is really good. I, I understand that, but with our budget situation and, you know, they do have that other building too. They, there's no reason they can't fundraise some as well. I mean, that's what all the other nonprofits do. They do fundraiser activities as well. And I guess are, are we gonna continue to maintain a building that we really have no say on how it's gonna be used?
We do have some say. We do have a, some say, but, and, but there was. We don't have absolute say because of the way the D is written, yes.
And, and there are other entities or rent, like Department of Ag and other people are renting the this building and they're not paying it. I think they, the, it should probably be better off.
Happen there.
They have that building and rented it out for the office space. They could probably generate a lot of this funding to maintain it.
The extension we have to do, correct?
No. I don't like.
It's not mandated, no.
We don't have to do any of this?
Yes, yes, we actually, uh, we could just cut the whole budget and just say.
Yeah.
Screw it.
I, I, I wanna support four H, but I.
I do too, and I think a donation.
The only county in South Dakota.
Does I have a four H program and an extension? Got it.
I mean, even, even if we went and gave fifty thousand dollars to the four H leaders, I think that might be better. They could, you know, hire experts to come in or teachers to teach these classes. It might be a lot more efficient than, you know, us maintaining a building and one staff because
Maybe, maybe they could make it a four H project that, well, one week this club cuts the grass, one next week, different club cuts.
I mean, we gotta, we, we gotta, we either gotta maintain it or we gotta do something different, but we've been, we've been kicking this for a year.
Absolutely.
Let's make a decision.
You can always just keep the budget. You don't, it doesn't mean you're gonna spend it and that'll still.
Yes, this is just, on the worst case plan.
No, that's not true. Last year, last year, we approved the state's attorney's provisional budget and we were told that we approved it, we're gonna spend it. So it, it's sick. We, we gotta pick, pick a lane. I just need to know which lane it is.
Quit making that accusation. I did not spend the extra money. Everybody is still on the same pay scale as they would have been. No extra money was given out.
But.
So let's, let's, let's approve this page as is, and I still think we need to get out from underneath of that building out there. And I agree with Dan, we could donate fifty thousand bucks and still save sixty-seven thousand dollars.
And, and we will still possibly put four H in Yingting County into jeopardy and put that, but proposal yet, because.
It's in jeopardy right now as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Well, okay.
And, and, and Ryan, I, we, we understand, but we might be more successful with two part-time, you know, like, like maybe a, a mom or a dad who, you know, works full-time, but they have nights. We, and that money could go to a lot better training. And we had, we have full-time staff now and, and they can't keep up. They're too busy. You know, we, we gotta make some sort of change. I don't know what it is, but could we put some sort of deadline on when we're gonna make a decision? I guess if we approve this, that's fine, but we still need, we need some certainty. We're gonna keep the building, we're gonna not keep the building. And, and then when is, when is Katie?
Katie, Katie will be done next month.
Okay.
After the, after the fair.
Okay.
And so that's the, that's the next position we have to open up to look at replacing. And see.
Or, or gonna report, I mean, we.
Well, again, like I said, like we would be the only county, we, that would put us into the position with the only county without any state support and no county support for these programs.
Didn't the state promise us that if we ever needed?
Any type of testing.
Let's, let's make a decision on this page right now and move on. Okay. We're moving on. Feed board.
This one has a new one.
Yep.
I don't see a lot of fat in the weed. The weed budget.
Mandated funding. Gotta take care of the weeds.
So move on to zoning?
Gary, do we pay out the, we don't, the county doesn't pay out the, um, retirement.
That's not what he meant. He means it's, it's misnamed. It should say, um, it, when he retires, he'll have accrued sick leave and accrued vacation, which the county does pay. It says retirement and I talked to him about that because it gives the wrong impression. Because as I understand, when you leave the county, you, if you have, I don't know, X number, twenty-four hours of vacation time, they pay you for it. What?
Well, we did it for.
Yeah, but I mean, but we we're calling it the wrong thing because it makes people think, oh, we're paying him retirement, but we're not.
The sick leave is at the quarter, not the full sick leave.
That's why, that's why they get sick before they quit.
Okay. We good there?
Well. I'm just looking historically, we have been under budget on operating expenses and are we budgeting too much here in some of these areas?
You on zoning?
In zoning.
Which one?
Well, for example, forty-five thousand, the professional services, and we've never, in last, I mean, we have to go back to maybe twenty twenty, when we kind of got close to that, above forty thousand, but otherwise we've been well below that.
What are you proposing?
Thirty-seven, five?
Thirty-five.
Well, we've already used thirty and we're only halfway through the year. So under the argument that was proposed earlier, why don't we leave it?
How about thirty-seven, five?
You know what? That twenty-nine thousand is the same amount that we had at the, at this time in twenty twenty-three.
Mm-hmm.
Here is that, uh.
And we only ended up at thirty-one.
Well, then let's do thirty-two.
So I, I'm happy with thirty-five, I think.
All right, let's do thirty-five. Hold, move on.
Hold on. Yeah, so as you know, it, it shows on the sheet, yeah, the district three goes up like three percent every year. So, so it, it, it went up, went up a little bit. We took the five thousand off last year too. And this was, this was the fun too. We always say, just in case, and like you said, Ryan, about do we, do we really want to undercut all these things if we had a lawsuit?
Because.
Like wind or something.
Cut this down here. This allows us to, allows other areas that need the money to have the money and we can stay.
Yeah, I don't, I, I have no issue either way. That's just a choice. If you wanna, if you wanna keep it just in case or not, but you can, you could take it down to thirty-seven, five or whatever.
Do we know, are we gonna, are we gonna have any bills from the wind turbine lawsuit?
That's possible.
What's, what's our portion of the payment for that? Because we.
Well, we'd be, we could be set for the twenty-five to the twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, so that's, that's just something to consider too, is if we, we haven't our insurance, but.
That's the, that's the deductible.
Well, yeah, but.
Yeah.
That, we will have to pay twenty-five thousand and that's where it'll come out and then we'll be over budget already.
Well, that would be out of the, and then it comes into the content.
Then it comes out of the channels.
That's a, that's an if, you know.
Yeah.
Those are ifs, you know.
That's exactly.
That's it. Those are ifs. Unlike the, you know, the twenty thousand and the equalization, that is almost a certainty that that will be contested.
Well, we, we.
And we will need to have that.
Right, so we do have a lawsuit right now though, and if that gets settled.
Do we?
We will, yeah, with the, so I'm saying that is also a certainty and that's where that would come out. And so I, I get what you're saying. So correct, Tyler, we still have the lawsuit with the wind turbine?
Oh. Invader, yeah.
Okay, sorry. From what I understand, we do, but how about, how about like how about thirty-seven and, or forty and we go? We just move on? Thirty-seven, forty?
Thirty-seven.
Okay, let's do it. Thirty-seven and move on. You fine with that, Gary, or?
Sure.
Okay.
Thirty-seven, Simon?
Uh-huh.
Yep. Did you have any other questions, Ryan, or is that?
Highway.
Yeah.
Ten thousand dollars left than it was without the four person.
What did you say, one?
Then if you compare the one that's dated like two and the ones that it's dated through, there is a ten thousand.
Okay.
There isn't that much difference from three percent and four percent. And there's. He's usually pretty.
Pretty close on his, on his estimates based on his bits.
And you never know about overtime in the winter time. I mean, that's a number that he just throws in there. I think he put twenty thousand bucks in there for that.
Yeah.
Well, and it might be forty and it might be two.
Correct. Last winter, I don't know that there was much overtime.
A couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago.
Yeah, I know.
We had a couple of good ones, but.
Again, I know a little off subject, but that's kind of one of those things is, you know, do we wanna look at a snow removal levy? Because when we have those big years, all it does is just destroys the budget, you know, the emergency snow levy. I know there's a couple of counties that do that, so.
I'm about all levied out personally.
Well, what, what it does when we have a huge amount of snow, then this budget is wrecked and we can't do the projects that would.
Must be a storm.
Rain warning.
What is that?
Rain warning.
Warning or watch?
Warning.
Does mean it's coming?
We go in the basement.
We could go in the basement, continue this ordeal. Or we can just finish it and pray not to die.
It's a brick building.
Praying not to die.
What? What'd you say?
I go with the praying not to die.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Will they, will they let us know if they see one? You know, they usually, they usually come at night so you can't see them. All right, are we done with the highway?
Well, FEMA won't come.
Yeah.
I don't think, uh, yeah. That much.
Get a call, be like, oh, now that's your responsibility.
I mean, highway, they've already really cut down their budget and they've early worked through and they got the advantage of some.
I think he went through and did a good job. Look, will we approve it and move on?
Yeah, that's what I thought we did.
All right.
Emergency management?
He, he does the budget the same way too. I, you, you know, you can't really see those.
Unexpected things coming.
The, well, the expenses and. Well, like, yeah, it's how much was actually spent on professional services. We don't know.
Well, what, what are their professional fees for?
I think like Zoom licenses and I think they have some licenses too.
Though he got rid of, he said he got rid of his Zoom licenses.
He got rid of some. He didn't.
There's a siren.
There's our whistle. That mean there's a sighting? Where's our office of emergency management?
Yeah.
Call back in if there's one outside.
Promise.
He'll say bye, see ya.
Well, the last place you want to be is in a car, I understand. Um, forty thousand in supplies, is that for like? I guess. I don't know, when he has an emergency, what kind of supplies he uses.
Like sandbags and all that stuff.
Twenty, twenty-one or twenty-four, he spent forty-one thousand dollars, twenty-three, forty-two thousand.
When will it tell us if there's one coming?
Brian, do you agree?
Yeah.
Well, isn't. Isn't this, the one I have here just looks like it's.
Oh, it'll be done in fifteen, twenty minutes anyway. Safety alert.
Let's just, was budget, Patty, do you have, what were the actual expenses?
Let's just was budget. Patty, do you have, what were the actual expenses for each one of these? Like how much you actually pay for insurance?
Gotta tell us if we should go downstairs.
And I, I think that's a.
Oh, yeah.
Hello, I think that for, for next year, we need to have.
Still in the meeting.
All of them do budgeting the same way.
I know, I know. We're in a safe building.
Six fourteen.
Okay, we'll stay in the basement.
Tell her to go downstairs.
She is.
Radar indicated.
Take the door.
Yes.
North of Utica?
Yeah.
Oh, well, then we're good.
Cause that's where I live.
Well, tell your wife and kids to go to the basement. All right, are we done with the office of emergency management since we might need them at any second?
That just drives me nuts.
It was a nice day out today too.
It was. And I didn't hear anything.
It's a good day to die. It's good as any other day. I need the whole bunch of your back again.
Critical.
Well, this doesn't tell us anything, does it?
It says the actual expenditure for twenty twenty four.
Yeah, that you're looking at your state actual. Just that full year twenty twenty four.
Oh, cause it's not in this one.
Oh, hell, that really bigger.
So he's twenty thousand dollars over. Am I reading this right? Okay. So what you're, what this shows us is we shouldn't cut. Cause he's already twenty thousand over. Are we done with this one?
Yeah, I think so.
So now we're moving on to the city of Yankton. All right. I'll skip to the library.
Miscellaneous, what do they use miscellaneous for?
You know, and I think this is something we need to support our seniors. So I, I'm fine with that. Air, airport, I, I don't know if I can justify. The ex. I mean, we, it's twenty five now and I don't. You know. I think zero, um, yes. Zero. What is everybody else?
Oh, going to zero?
Yep. Zero for the airport.
I don't think we should go to zero. I think we should stay at twenty five hundred.
We're three, three said zero already. Don, what do you think?
Well, my thoughts are gonna come when we total it up and find out where we're at. So far, we're just niggling diamond ourselves. Categories, so I'd say. They were fifteen or.
Twenty five?
Twenty five hundred.
Three of us said zero.
Twenty five hundred is what we did. Last year.
But they bill us for fifteen every year, no matter what they say.
Nine one one, we don't have a say. Right?
We get nine one money funds. We get the nine one, we're really just a pastor.
We're a pastor.
Pastor, what, what's been disputed is how much is that pastor? Uh, and I've always been like, we should commit to what comes in, not to a number.
I would agree.
That they want, that they think they should.
What, what we collect from the nine one one dollars, I'm perfectly fine given to the. It should not be more than that, though.
And they, we do get about thirty two thousand a month.
Now that's going up.
That went up.
That went up because.
That's really limited on.
The rate went up.
So do we make that payment monthly to the city? We just pass it through. Monthly?
It's not monthly, it's, it's um.
Are we on library?
Here's my theory with the library. If you look at the last page of the city's thing. Uh, the city wants to build a twelve million dollar library. I suspect what the city's gonna do, they're gonna do with the library, what they did with the water and sewer, which is put a assessment. On the water and sewer bill, this one will be a library assessment. I'm not a fan of all these assessments. So if you wanna drop that to ten thousand dollars, I'm fine.
Drop it to what? Ten thousand?
Yeah, and I would, I would be fine with keeping it at twenty four if county residents had the same rights as city residents, but they don't.
They're not, there's not enough county residents to justify that extra to fourteen thousand.
Be, because in, in years past, county residents didn't have to pay for a library card. And then it got lowered and now we're back where it was, but they still have to pay twenty dollars for.
I get that because I live outside in the county and I don't have a library card. And when I went to get one. Even though I own seven properties within the city of Yankton, the man was very rude to me. And said that I shouldn't have a library card. So having said that, I don't go to the library.
So you're saying.
Seven properties.
Seven properties in the confines of the city of Yankton.
So you're, you're at ten then, you said ten?
Yes, and I'm guessing that I'm going to get a library surcharge when they decide that they're going to build a new library. For the fourteen people that use the library.
Fine with that, Wanda, or what everybody else think?
So just to be clear, you know. They do a lot of free services that are open to anyone in the county. That free card just allows you to check out books and check out some of their equipment.
Oh, and the Huthar. Yes. Which is great. But I don't think we need a twelve million dollar building to do that.
I don't think the twenty thousand dollar donation to them is gonna matter whether they build a building or not. They're gonna build the building. I think we should give them the twenty thousand dollars. I don't like them to ask for twenty four, but.
Well, I would be willing to give them the twenty four if county residents.
Well, that's not gonna happen.
Well, and, and you know, that's, you know, appreciate the city, but you know, we need help with the ambulance and you know, they won't help us, so.
For chairman.
Yes, sir.
Can I give you a little history on?
Why don't you step up to the podium so our at home viewers can hear you? Turn your light on, turn your light on. Turn your light on. There you go.
A little history on, on the library. And why you have that twenty thousand dollars. It didn't start out that way. But in the eighties. What happened? We didn't have the proliferation of the internet at that time. And the fact of the matter is, the kids were writing research papers. I was on the school board. The rural kids couldn't even use the library at that time. So I took it upon myself to ask the school board to come to the county commission. And tr- strike up a deal with the county and the county with the city. So our rural kids in school would have use of that library and could do their research papers. And that's where this all came about, about nineteen eighty five, nineteen eighty six in that time when I was on the school board. So the fact is, do we really need it now? With the internet? Probably no. You know, but that's where this all came from to begin with.
Oh, you turned your thing.
The boards. Or the teachers were asking kids to do research papers and they didn't have access to the library. And as far as you wound up, uh, and they're not giving you a card, I was living out in the country. And I had the same issue. I couldn't as an adult. But I had a property and was part, uh, part owner in a business. And I managed to get a card. But, and you should too.
Well, and he said if I brought copies of my deeds, he'd give me a card. I don't need one that bad.
But, but the point being is that. This was in the eighties, the mid eighties. We weren't looking at the internet yet. That was still futuristic and.
And the majority of households have the internet now because if they have a child, they use the internet to do their schoolwork. Most of the people that use. The internet at the library are trustees, the homeless people. And some few people that don't have internet at their house.
But I just wanted to give you a history of why the county. Was, uh, why the county was even paying anything to the city and they did it. For the school district at that time, so.
I wanna say, I wanna say we're the only, the, the only library that does it this way. I, I'm not aware of another library that charges.
Thank you, Gary.
People from the county to use the public library. I guess it's public, I guess, unless you live outside city limits, then it's not, but. I'm, did we say ten?
I said ten, but.
Ten and move on?
Whatever.
What, what does? Wanna do?
Well, I hate to cut it, but I also do agree is like it's. Not essential functions in like if we. We really gotta look at how we can balance our budget the best for everyone, so.
All right. Public welfare.
You go, go to fifteen?
No.
Fifteen is what we used to do in the years before this. Uh, we went, I went up in twenty twenty four to.
I would fully fund it if they would, if they would go back to how.
We've heard that three times now.
Let's move on.
Move on. Pick a number.
Oh, we all agreed to ten, so.
I don't think them charging for library cards to the rural kids is a big deal, so.
All right.
So what number are you bet?
I'll let you guys go to ten.
All right, let's move on. Public welfare.
Now we're at. Are we at pathways?
Well, I'm, I got public welfare, twenty thousand.
Yeah, I got.
And homeless shelter, yeah, I guess.
There we go.
You know, like, again, I, I don't think we should double. The commitment. Well, the donation to pathways. And, and a lot of times. These organizations don't realize that they are not paying property taxes on their property. And I don't, I don't know how many. How many properties this pathway owns now, at least two or three?
They own at least. Two, and I think they're building a storage unit on one.
So that's, I mean, that's a big donation that they're getting by not being taxed. So. Do we, do we need? And, and again, this organization has gotten away at least somewhat. From housing homeless and then now it's housing Department of Correction, people who are out on parole.
Well, they have to have somewhere to parole to in order to get out so that they can work. Because we don't have enough employees in this town.
I, I agree with.
I hear it repeatedly.
They're coming from, you know, everywhere and not necessarily Yankton.
They, they aren't coming here just to live at pathways.
But what I'm saying is somebody, somebody gets out of prison and they, and what, what, what is recidivism? What, what, how high is it? Forty, fifty percent?
Forty three.
Okay, so there, so out of ten people that go to pathways, at least. Four plus are probably gonna commit another.
Well, four of them might, um, relapse, use meth again. And if the court were to revoke their probation, they could go back for a little while.
But is it?
But it's not a long time. We don't have repeat murderers here. We don't have repeat rapists here.
I don't know, it's just when they come through, then they use our criminal justice system.
Although, although.
Would this?
Tyler's thing seems to think we have a repeat rapist here.
Uh, what about five thousand?
Well, I like pathways because I think they do good work.
Well, I think they do, but is it an essential function of county government to do that? I mean, is it? I mean. What about five thousand? I think we're agreeing that twenty thousand is off the table.
Yeah. I'd like to see a stay at ten and go down the road.
I'll say stay at ten.
All right, ten, next.
And Lewis Clark Mental Health. Uh, Dr. Standage wanted a hundred and three thousand, a hundred and three thousand. Does. Keep people out of HSC and out of Avera for, so we don't have to pay a six hundred and fifty dollar. Medical. Thing.
Hundred and three? One oh five?
Oh, I had a hundred and three, I'm sorry.
That's actually.
All of these, all of these expenditures, I, I think are good.
I like the hundred and three.
I don't, I don't have any issue with any of them.
But as, but as I was saying before I was rudely interrupted. Cause I'd go with the hundred and five. Be done with it.
Don, do you wanna pay to fix up old houses?
Well, we're not too old houses, historical. We're at ability building services in mind.
I think those, we do, are those required? I mean.
ABS, there's not a.
I don't think.
But.
They're good programs.
They're good programs.
They're a program, but are.
But we're.
Who knows what, how, what's gonna happen.
Are they, are they, um.
Are they?
For profit or non-for-profit?
Non-for-profit.
Non-profit.
And they want twenty two thousand, three hundred and eighty five dollars. What?
They never go up.
Oh, okay.
They do.
Well, they haven't done it for a while, Brian.
Yeah, I, I was like, guys, just look at, I have the twenty four, like there's eleven thousand in twenty four what they requested. They have gone up.
They're good, they're good programs for a highly dependent population.
Okay, with ten.
You're, so you're gonna, you're gonna, um. Fund the homeless people from outside the community, but the people who have mental disabilities, we're not gonna fund.
Just moving here to live.
Think of the children, Wanda.
I thought this was.
Then think of the children at pathways. Because ABS, ABS moves people here because they have nice facilities. Pathways, I don't think I would move here to live at pathways.
Look at the ABS, there's a list of like fifty people all from Yankton that are different.
Well, no, these are people that they serve. Who now live in Yankton. I don't know that they are from Yank.
Check your proposal so we can keep going.
I said ten. Cause that's what they were before they, according to Mr.
Eleven thousand, one hundred and ninety two dollars and fifty cents is what they requested.
You wanna chop things, chop it in half.
I, I support fully funded them.
And last year they requested twenty two thousand, three hundred and eighty nine. So very.
Four dollars.
Yes, four dollars less this year, so very similar. I think.
So pick a number.
What do you, what do you, Don and John, what do you guys want?
I don't know, I, I always have to be the naysayer.
I, I say cut them to fifteen and go down the road.
I'm good with fifteen. So am I.
All right, let's move on.
What's the aspire?
Aspire, that's from Aberdeen. Do we, we don't have to do that one at all, do we?
Abilities have Yankton residents. Living there.
Now those.
So are this much like the people that moved to Yankton for ability building service?
Those have been statics. They have not changed.
All right, move on.
What did we do?
Leave them, leave them the same and move on.
Seven hundred and twenty dollars?
They never cheat, yeah, it's per bed.
Why don't you just round it up to a thousand?
Well, I think it's, it's based on residents.
Whatever.
It went down from one thousand four hundred.
Historical?
Historical sites.
I happen to like the mead.
I, I do too. I, I served on the board. It's a great group. Um, the feedback I've heard from the public is that they voted for the. That historical preservation tax levy years ago. And the feedback from people who I spoke said, they thought that was gonna go to historical sites and not additional funds. And the feedback from people who I spoke said, they thought that was gonna go to historical sites and not additional funds. Because they already get a hundred and fifteen thousand or a hundred and fourteen. I know that that goes to things other than the mead, but. Most of it does go to the mead. And again, that, both of these don't pay any property tax as well, so. I'm fine with whatever you guys decide.
I'm sorry?
I was.
Two thousand is gonna.
Well, the meads.
It's not gonna cost me.
The mead's twenty.
The mead's twenty and the Kramer Canyon home is two.
Yeah.
So the mead's already getting tax dollars.
They, they have their own property tax levy.
But the mead, but the Kramer Canyon's getting zero, correct?
I think they do get some from the historical.
Oh, then let's give two thousand to Kramer Canyon. Since they don't get any from this levy that is being spoken of.
And twenty to the mead, historical or eighteen to the historical?
I would say twenty, but I'm probably gonna get outvoted.
I'll go twenty.
Cause I'm on the board.
I'll go twenty. We're increasing funding for these guys then?
No, it's the same as last year.
Well, last year was what, uh, total was?
Last year was twenty-two thousand.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-four was eighteen thousand.
Before that, it was twelve.
Your to-date actual is twenty. Up the side.
Yeah.
Mister Heine, it's your number.
Twenty, cause we're gonna be back talking about it again anyway. Let's go.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Don.
Twenty, twenty-two.
I would find it zero. I don't know.
Hey, then we're on to.
Soil conservation, are we gonna do thirty as our donation to them? I mean, we, we kinda gave them our word. I mean, thirty is a lot better than fifty-seven, which we were. Spending in years prior.
Yep.
Right, then we're on to others. Courts, um.
Let's cut that.
Perhaps Mister Larson can share with us with his microphone on. If he has noticed less Hispanic speaking people since. In court, in felony court, since, since simples closed down because I haven't seen Dahlia there as often.
I really can't say if that's the reason.
Well, can you say whether or not we use less trans, uh, translators?
As to felony court, that would be a fair statement. I'm not sure about misdemeanor court.
Okay. So I have a question for Patty then. If we leave it at, if we have it, leave it at five hundred, that doesn't mean they have to spend it, does it?
About a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, that's so far this year. That was only, um, through April.
Couple of big trials might.
No.
Bump that up.
Not requiring a translator.
What if we?
Jurors, jurors would get like twelve dollars a day, so they're not gonna break.
What if we do an asterisk and?
I'm on jury duty this, for the rest of this year, so maybe we should bump it up though.
Well, I don't think we get to, it's a pretty low number.
Ten hours a week pro bono from Wanda Fox, that should be reduced.
Already do that.
There's still a special interpreter session at least once or twice a month.
For mag court.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not like it used to be.
I say we leave court alone, data processing. Is that, is that data processing? Is that your IT budget or is that different, Ryan?
That's, that's the IT. So, you know, we've changed now to going with the, um. The new contract.
So isn't that like fifty thousand instead of a hundred?
Not for a year.
So.
For professional services.
Services.
Yeah, it's forty-eight hundred and twenty dollars a month.
A little bit more than that, you know.
Okay, so sixty?
Probably, we could probably believe, I would probably safely budget seventy.
Okay. But I, but that includes our IT people and some, some.
Alright.
Whatever you call.
I'm fine with it. Let's, let's move to the next one.
Are you gonna have the offices kick out of their own budget if they have something wrong or?
Ideally, we would prob, ideally, we'd like it on the general, we would like to have it just going through the IT budget all bit and then, but like.
Alright, let's move on.
In general, we can talk about. The only other thing I was thinking, um, we may increase repairs and maintenance simply cause we do have the safety center issue.
Increase it above sixty?
Well.
You had fifty last year.
We had, yeah, so, um. That one may, uh.
And we should get some hardware out of the state.
A little bit. But we may increase that one a little bit just because we know we have a problem.
We'll put an asterisk or something on that.
We should get some hardware though out of the state.
That's the thing too. It's like, we also don't wanna try to take advantage of that security stuff, so it doesn't come out of our budget.
Let's just keep it as it is and.
Alright, we'll keep it there, um, just reducing that one hundred to seventy.
Catastrophic, that's.
The what?
I, I say we keep that.
I don't know what slurp is.
Catastrophic legal expense.
Oh.
Predatory.
I, I've actually heard that there are several counties that are refusing to pay this, this year, um. Just out of protest. I don't know if we wanna do that. Uh, they do do good things when they bring the state trapper out and we would. I guess lose that service, but. It's, this is interesting cause they.
I also think three thousand dollars is gonna kill the HSC.
No, no, it's not. It's just that this is property tax dollars going to support us. Going to and supporting.
Farmers.
State, no, a state program that's administered by game fiction parks. I'm, I'm fine with keeping it, um, care of the poor, fine with that. Contact center.
That's care of the poor. It amazed me that as low as it was. That's really, it's really amazing.
He has bills next year though.
What's everybody's thought of contact?
I would like to see that thirty thousand stay as is and they have requested another. Ten thousand dollars for the next two years on a separate item. Which will help them get to the number that they need for, to rent this new facility. And that would get them prepared to move out of our basement.
Is there any, is there any timeline for when they're moving? Cause I, I mean.
I, I, no.
I'm supportive of it, but I don't wanna give them ten thousand more and then they, you know.
No, I get that.
Falls through, so.
I get that. And, and, and that's on a separate commitment that.
I would.
Fundraising to.
I would like them to have some kind of accountability for people in Yankton County. Instead of Nebraskans and bottom county folks.
And when, when she did come in, I think the last time or the time before, they did say that if over forty percent of their. You know, the people they serve.
Stream.
Can't speak English, which is kind of a concern to me too, cause I certainly don't wanna be aiding illegal immigration. In the community.
I'm okay to leave it at thirty then.
Yeah.
And then, and then next year, we can use that money to go to path.
No extra, leave it at.
Not, not now, but we could make an, because that's a, 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 basically a fundraiser that they're doing. To, to raise the money to move out.
But, but if they're gonna request ten thousand dollars more from us, it has to come out of somewhere. So we need to maybe put that in the commission budget then.
I don't wanna put it in the budget. I, and I don't wanna spend outside of the budget, so I'd like to leave it at thirty in that.
Okay.
Not commit ourselves to fundraisings that we don't have to commit ourselves to.
Catastrophic PR.
I think we need to keep this one too.
Yeah.
This is, what if somebody goes and. Uh, huge medical bills, right?
Hey, mentally handicapped, is that different from the other two that we already did?
Yep, this is, uh, I think this is like. You see?
No, that would be, that's mental illness. That's the next one.
It's a board.
No, mental illness board. That's at seventy.
These are attorneys, mental illness attorney.
Mentally handicapped is for attorneys? Oh, for the attorneys to do the, well, that shouldn't be sixty thousand. Because they've gone from doing ten, twelve, fifteen down to max of four a week. When's the last time you did one, Tyler?
Cut it to forty.
We also got the IVCs.
Yeah, but there's what, two of those a year?
Do we, in twenty twenty-two, it was ninety thousand and twenty twenty-four, it was sixty.
Forty.
But if, if we're gonna cut it to forty and it, and it goes to sixty, then, you know.
You might have a conflict on that one if you're getting paid for.
What?
You might have a conflict on that one.
I had one mental illness set of hearings in the last year. I don't know that that's a conflict. I'm more than happy to turn them down because it is a waste of my time.
Same.
Ryan, what do you think? Do you think keeping it at sixty? I mean, we, we've been over that twice in the past few years.
Going forward.
I was just looking at the actual.
I'll turn them down cause it is a waste of my time. What?
Yeah.
Like I said, it was ninety thousand.
And the county can pay a flat two fifty for the people that do them, cause that's what they're charging. A flat rate instead of per hour.
No.
I would, I would leave it at sixty, I think.
Alright, let's see, let's see, move on.
April, then statistically, we should.
Alright, mental illness board.
Again, they aren't doing them like they used to. That could be cut.
Well, let me have an opportunity.
Didn't.
I'm sorry.
Didn't Lucy come in and did we approve or?
So, so Wanda, are you saying make them be more efficient with the mental illness boards or what do you?
They are pretty efficient. They do them every.
Moving along here.
They do them Tuesdays and Friday mornings, unless there's a Monday holiday, in which case, then they do them on Wednesday.
Can we keep moving along here on these pages? We're getting a little off course and it's.
Where you went on the.
Time to go.
Fifty.
Fifty, I, I did the quick math, I said sixty.
Fine.
Seventy-five, how's that?
Fine, because I think we'd be overpaying.
Are we on, you're on the mental?
What do you, what do you own? Instead of seventy-five, you want sixty?
Yeah.
Just go down to sixty, yeah.
Bring in that substitute.
Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, sorry, but eighteen thousand is none.
So zero.
That's already, that's already paid.
Yeah.
And then she, she had no requests this year, so let's turn the page before we get asked.
Operation transferring, operating transfer out.
We won't know that till the end of year plan for.
Now, this, this comes out of the jail fund, correct?
That's the last payment though, right? So requested budget should be zero?
Or.
Is it, is this a payment for the safety center or is this money to fix things when they're broken?
Sure, but, so it's zero.
Okay, zero.
Domestic abuse.
Okay, this forty is zero?
This is a mandate, have to pay it. I think so.
I don't care.
Jail building.
No, that's good.
County building expenditures, hundred thousand.
Although that may, that may go up if we have to buy a generator for the safety center.
And historical, historical preservation is, uh, levy. Napa, five hundred thousand.
We're paying that?
Payment.
We're paying Napa, the five hundred sixty?
I don't think that that's the biggest. Yeah, I don't think, as Patty can clarify, that five hundred thousand Napa, that's money that. They've collected that goes to themselves. Is that accurate to say?
Well, I've seen it's there.
It's not an expense out of us.
Maybe they have a.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn all in favor, I.
I.
Oppose, same side?
Yep.
Yes.
Um, are we gonna get this emailed out to us then as the provisional budget of?
Thank you.